Friday, huh?
What's that?
Is it her again, Mary?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, it's been nonstop after that. Thank you.
Governor Corbett, let me talk to him.
Yeah, he seems real nice.
Nice guy.
Brian, you ready? Welcome, everybody, to the Fayette County Commissioners' meeting. It is Thursday, August 21st, 2025. It is 10:00 a.m. If you will all stand, and we're going to welcome Andrew Miller from Faith Assembly to lead us in the opening prayer.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for this day. We invite you in this place and ask that your hand and your blessing would be upon this meeting, the Commissioners, and the people of Fayette County. We ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. If you will face the flag and repeat.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go to number three. Is there any public comment on agenda items? Mary, is there anything online? Hearing none, we'll move to item number four, Proclamations and Awards. And the first thing we're going to do is welcome Dr. Denise Martin and the Fayette County Behavioral Health for their Community Recognition Award. So we're going to step over here. Step over here.
Oh. I'm going to say some nice things. Can I read this? Sure. Now? You tricked me.
You're on.
I didn't know I was surrounded. Good morning, gentlemen. Okay. I'm here as a member of the Fayette County Behavioral Health Advisory Board to present the Community Recognition Award. As was done in previous years, the Advisory Board presents this award to the outstanding community leader who has made difference in the lives of people in recovery, children and adults who are now healthy, individuals with intellectual disabilities and/or on the spectrum. This year, the award goes to Nikki Trump, but I have to tell you why she was chosen. Nikki Trump is a resident of Smithville, the CEO of FamilyPod, a home and community support provider for clients in Fayette County and Washington County. Her organization has grown to 325 employees and over 300 clients. Her organization provides intellectual and physical disability services to help individuals develop skills to live independently and make connections within the community. Yet, being the CEO is not the reason she was nominated. Nikki became aware of the limited opportunities for individuals with intellectual disabilities. She took the lead to organize adult dances, which are held on the fourth Tuesday of every month, six to eight. Individuals along with their caregivers from the three county areas are invited to attend. Through her persistence, she acquired various donations for the dances. The dances are held at beautiful lakeside venues in Collin Town. She was able to support snacks in the DJ. The dances have been a huge success and are attended monthly by 15 to 70 individuals. In addition to the monthly dances, she organized the Snowball Dance in December. The clients are encouraged to dress in nice clothing, offer a catered meal, have photos of Santa, have sweets from the traditional cookie table. The first dance I attended, she provided 144 dozen cookies. That's true. I never thought so many cookies in my life. Again, in December, if you have time, please stop in to the Snowball Dance. Her next venue is a talent show, so the individuals can showcase their talents. As you can see, Nikki believes in getting back into the community. I'd like to conclude by saying I have known Nikki since she was a junior high student at A.G. Moore, and I was her principal. Who would think that such a quiet young lady with such a big heart would grow up and do so many great things? Come on up, Nikki.
Can we give a floor?
I just want to thank the county very much. I love what I do. Couldn't do without the support of everybody in the community, our family, all of my office staff, and all my field staff. It's a wonderful thing to have all their faces lined up and they get to do any of those things to show their specific talents, whether all of them or any of them are in play. So, thank you very much.
Do we need pictures? We need to... Yep. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, brother.
So, it is brought up in knowledge and proclaiming September Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month, and we have some guests coming from... Amy, Bob, and Gina. In recognition that September, that September of Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month, the Fayette County Commissioners acknowledge the following. Whereas in Pennsylvania, one person dies from suicide 34 hours, in 2023 deaths by suicide in Pennsylvania, a total of 1,976 to 49,316 nationally. Whereas in our state, suicide is the second leading cause of death for 10 to 24-year-olds, and there's a fourth leading cause of death amongst 35 to 44-year-olds. Whereas each person's death by suicide infinitely affects at least six other people, with over 250,000 needed to be each year. Whereas the Fayette County Suicide Prevention Task Force is urging residents of Fayette County to, one, recognize suicide as a significant health problem in Fayette County; two, support the development of accessible behavioral health practices for county residents implementing best practices in reducing suicide risk for people of all ages and backgrounds; and, three, acknowledge that no single suicide prevention intervention will be sufficient or appropriate by all populations for killing. Therefore, by virtue of our authority vested by the laws of Fayette County, Pennsylvania, we do proclaim September 2025 as Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month, and call upon the people of Fayette County to learn how they can help with suicide prevention in their communities. I'm signing this statement on Fayette County. Congratulations. Can you be our spokesperson?
Please.
Okay.
Thank you. I, as a member of the Fayette County Suicide Prevention Task Force, we would like to invite anyone, any member of the community, to join us on the third Friday of each month at 8:30 a.m. I know it's early, but that is when we hold our meetings. They are in person at the IHOP right here in Union Town, but we also do Zoom. So, if you can't get up out of bed and get to IHOP at 8:30, we would gladly see you off our line. You can use the Zoom. Thank you.
And there is a event?
There are plenty of events that will be coming in September.
There's lots of courthouse events.
There will be on September 17th. People have a vigil outside the courthouse. We are inviting the public to come and organize those that have the IHOP.
And our courthouse block is going to be purple. But thank you, guys. Good job. Open them up. There was a chat for, from Bill Tockington asking for support of the Sheik's Can Trail motions. All right, number five is condition of the county, Controller's.
Good morning. This is the Controller's report for the month of August 2025. In our general fund, general ledger, we have $5,816,773.01 as of this morning. Trans anticipation note of $4,500,000. 2025 revenue, our budget was $57,207,229.66. We have received 68.44%. Our 2025 expenditures in our budget for $55,535,690.65. The percentage used has been 61.12%. Money's due to the general fund. Payroll payments due to the general fund, EMA, $216,626.96. Payroll due to the general fund and liquid fuels, $82,028.71. Payroll payments due to general fund from CYS, $9,930,199.6. And loan payable due to general fund through CYS, $3,050,000, for a total of $13,278,854.73. Act 13, our Marcella Shell Fund, Fund 13, our cash balance unconditional wells account, Our cash balance in our legacy account, $120,924.04. Cash balance in our bridge department account, $2,224,225.51. And our capital reserve fund, Fund 51, our cash balance is $5,546.37. Thank you.
Any questions about the Controller's report? Please reach out to his office. All right, number six, Fayette County Redevelopment Authority.
Consider adoption of the attached resolution, which approves modifications to Fayette County's fiscal year 2021 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG programs for the county, and on behalf of Manellan and Redstone Townships.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Number seven, Behavioral Health Administration.
Consider approval of the following contract professional services and modification agreements: Under Base Contract Agreements 2025-2026, Allegheny Intermediate Unit, Chestnut Ridge Counseling Services, Inc., Fayette County Drug and Alcohol Commission, Pathways of Southwestern Pennsylvania, Southwest Behavioral Care, Inc., the Ark of Fayette County; Under Professional Service Agreement 2025-2026, Goodwill of Southwestern Pennsylvania; Under Modification Agreement Number Two, Specialized Therapy and Related Services; and Modification Agreement Number Three, Accessibilities, Inc., Neurological Therapy Specialist, Inc., and Rehab Links, as listed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
So, second?
Second.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Number eight, Children and Youth.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 purchase of service agreement between the County of Fayette through CYS and Juvenile Probation and Lifespan Family Services of P.A., 203 Lane Avenue, Punxsutawney, P.A., for foster family placement and family finding services on an as-needed basis. The rates are listed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 purchase of service agreement between the County of Fayette through CYS and Juvenile Probation and Adolphy Village, Inc., 354 Main Street, Latrobe, P.A., for foster care and group home services on an as-needed basis. The rates are listed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 purchase of service agreement between the County of Fayette through CYS and Juvenile Probation and Outside In School of Ex-Prential Education, Inc., 196 Hamilton School Road, Ball of R.P.A., to provide in-home services to families on an as-needed basis. The rates are listed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 purchase of service agreement between the County of Fayette through CYS and Jasmine Johnson, 407O State Route 31, Donegal, P.A., to provide childcare services on an as-needed basis. The rate for this service shall be $500 for each week that services are provided.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 purchase of service agreement addendum between the County of Fayette through CYS and Juvenile Probation and Pathways Adolescent Center, 370 North Seneca Street, Oil City, P.A., for group home placement. The rates are listed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 purchase of service agreement between the County of Fayette through CYS and Juvenile Probation and Cayuga Home for Children, Inc., doing business as Cayuga Centers, 101 Hamilton Avenue, Auburn, New York, for trauma therapy services on an as-needed basis. The rates are listed.
Is there a motion?
All is in favor. So moved.
Second.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 purchase of service agreement between the County of Fayette through CYS and Juvenile Probation and Family Care for Children and Youth, Inc., 25 Belford Boulevard, Milton, P.A., for foster family placement services on an as-needed basis. The rates are listed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Consider approval to purchase 17 Microsoft Surface laptops at a cost of $1,537.67 each, 17 Microsoft Surface dock to docking stations at a cost of $220.92 each, and 17 MS Extended Hardware Service Plan with four-year warranty at a cost of $132.93 each, for a total cost of $32,155.84. This purchase is through CoStar CDW.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Once again, is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second.
Consider approval to purchase six Lenovo 100E Chromebook Mediatek Campanio at a cost of $253.17 each, for a total cost of $1,519.2. This purchase is through CoStar's CDW.
Is there a motion? Once again, is there a motion? Hearing no motion to consider, the motion is denied.
Consider approval to purchase one Microsoft Surface laptop at a cost of $1,360.73 and one MS Extended Hardware Service Plan with four-year warranty at a cost of $265.88 each, for a total cost of $1,626.61. This purchase is through CoStar CDW.
Is there a motion? Once again, is there a motion? Hearing no motion. Dies for lack of a motion.
Consider approval of the following CoStar leases through Ford of Union Town, which includes a $100,000-mile warranty and an extended service premium maintenance plan. Financing will be through First National Bank Commercial Leasing. The lease information is listed.
Is there a motion? Again, is there a motion? Hearing no motion, the motion dies. If I could just take a moment to discuss, we are at, we've had to front CYS a considerable amount of money that has put a cash, cash flow problem back to Fayette County. We are under budget, as you can see by the Controller's report. We've taken in $39 million. We've only spent $33 million. We are under budget, but our continued outflows to fund CYS have posed a serious cash flow problem for the county, to the point where we have instituted a spending freeze, and so that is why I did not support any of these motions. Further to compound that, CYS is largely funded by the state of Pennsylvania, which does not have a budget, and we do not know when that budget's going to come through. So, we will consider these at another time when we are in a better financial condition.
I agree.
Ditto here.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 purchase of service agreement between the County of Fayette through CYS and Juvenile Probation and the East End United Community Center, 150 Cole Springs Street, Union Town, P.A., for middle school truancy program. The rates are listed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of the acceptance of the resignation of Fayette County Children and Youth Services Advisory Board Member Sandy Wilson effective immediately.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Number nine, Emergency Management.
Consider approval for five staff members to attend the Keystone State Chapter of Mena, the National Emergency Number Association Training Conference, Tuesday, September 16th through Friday, September 19th, 2025, in State College. This will also include one day of update training information presented by Tyler on our CAD Computer-Aided Dispatch System. Total cost not to exceed $3,300, which is a 911-budgeted expense.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Number 10, Human Resources.
Under Building and Grounds, consider ratification of the hiring of Deana Tar, Custodial One, SEIU Pay Grade III Step SR, $12.95 an hour, $25,200... (cough) excuse me, $252.50 annually, effective July 21st, 2025.
Is there a motion?
Second. So moved.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of the separation of employment of Dana Rozak, Custodial One, effective July 29th, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Consider ratification of the hiring of Chloe Baker, Custodial One, SEIU Pay Grade III Step SR, $12.95 an hour, $25,252.50 annually, effective August 4th, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Under Central Department, consider ratification of the hiring of John McKeon, Part-Time Clerk, Non-Union, $12 an hour, effective August 18th, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider ratification of the hiring of Suzie Lilly, Part-Time Clerk, Non-Union, $12 an hour, effective August 18th, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of the resignation of Alma Lucas, Part-Time Clerk, effective August 13th, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Under CYS, consider approval of the resignation of Nicole Baker, Caseworker One, effective July 25th, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of the hiring of Alyssa Hoff, Caseworker Two, SEIU CYS, $26.77 an hour, $52,202 annually, effective September 2nd, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Under EMA, consider ratification of the promotion of Kristi Glisten Norris to Full-Time Dispatcher One, SEIU Pay Grade C, $24.44 an hour, $50,835.20 annually, effective July 13th, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of the resignation of Olivia Tobey, Dispatcher Training, effective July 23rd, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of the resignation of Haley Schultz, Dispatcher One, effective August 24th, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of the voluntary demotion of Jason Ross to Dispatcher One, SEIU Pay Grade 10 Step A, $23.26 an hour, $48,380.80 annually, effective September 1st, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Under FACT, consider approval of the resignation of Christine Sokol, Operations Manager, effective July 22nd, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is brought and move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of the resignation of Robert Wilson, Full-Time Bus Driver, effective July 19th, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is brought and move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider ratification of the hiring of Paul Kutcher, Part-Time Bus Driver, Non-CDL, SEIU Pay Grade Twelve, Step SR, $17.45 an hour, effective August 18th, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is brought and move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Under Fayette County Behavioral Health Administration, consider approval of the resignation of Paul Blows, Caseworker Two, effective July 28th, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is brought and move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of the hiring of Kiara Kitchenbottom, Caseworker One, Non-Union, Pay Grade Thirty-Three, Step EE, $19.82 an hour, $38,649 annually, effective August 25th, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is brought and move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Number eleven, the Office of Human and Community Services, FACT.
Consider approval for Rudy Dettko, Executive Director of the Office of Human and Community Services, FACT, to engage in negotiations with and subsequently hire West Media Group for the purposes of creating and implementing a digital marketing plan for diversified outreach for FACT at a cost not to exceed $1,200 per month.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is brought and move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
We need to get that moving. Our advertising is, right now, been paused. You know, in order to keep building the, you know, the ridership, we need to get our advertising back there and outreach fully implemented again.
All right. Number twelve, Office of Tax Services.
Under Tax Claim, consider approval of the following repository bids opened on August 5th, 2025. Subject to all conditions being met, total bid amount is $1,919 as listed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is brought and move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of the following conditions of sale between the Fayette County Tax Claim Bureau and Bid for Assets. Do you want me to read those?
Sure.
The sale will go live from September 22nd at 10:00 a.m. and close September 24th at 10:00 a.m. The buyer will need to submit full payment for the property online prior to end of the day on September 24th. There will be a $100 registration fee to take part in the sale. The bidder will be required to submit a $100 deposit in order to bid. In the event that they are on the not permitted to bid list, or they don't pursue property, they will be refunded their deposit. Otherwise, the deposit will go toward the purchase price. We encourage everyone to use the site, but we will have a paper packet if they can fill out to have Bid for Assets bid on their behalf. Registration will be open August 1st, 2025 at 8:00 a.m. and close on September 8th, 2025 at 4:00 p.m. The usual bid packet will be online at the Bid for Assets site. Bidding increments will be in multiples of $50. The buyer premium is 5% of the purchase price, and Bid for Assets will provide a URL to their site, which will be put on the Tax Claim Bureau website. The sale list will be updated every Friday leading to the sale.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is brought and move in second. Any further discussion? So, this is being done, A, for several reasons. Reason number one is it is a considerable cost to Fayette County to hold these auctions in person. We have to have staff from multiple departments help man that auction. So that's A. B will be to get more bidders and then hence get more, higher prices for the properties as they get more bidders. And then C, this is no cost to Fayette County. So, I'm fully supportive of this.
We, it was proposed to have a $250 registration deposit, and we lowered that to 100 to make it more user-friendly.
There are other counties that it's $500, so we didn't want to do that.
This is, this is just part of our move to automate the offices in our county, so we're going to try to do more also, but this is one of those.
Yeah. Bid for Assets is currently been doing Somerset County for several years, so they have a track record in southwestern Pennsylvania. Our neighboring county has used them and hasn't had no problems. I talked to them about that, and so I feel comfortable moving forward with this.
Their Sheriff's Department uses, in not Bid for Assets, they use another service, but they have all their sales automated as well. Without, any further comment? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Number ten, Planning, Zoning, and Community Development.
Consider approval of an amendment to the Greenways Trails and Recreation Program Grant for Fayette County's German Mason Town Park Trail Design Project. The adjustment is due to a revision of the cost estimate for the project by Gibson Thomas Engineering. Therefore, a revised cost estimate includes a county match of $33,965. The grant amount requested is $192,467. The total project cost is $226,432.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is brought and move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of a statewide transportation alternative set aside, TASA, multimodal PennDOT grant application for construction of 4.6 miles of the Sheepskin Trail between South Union Township to Fair Chance Borough. The total project cost is $3,206,956.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is brought and move in second. Any further discussion?
This is, are taking the next step to go the section of trail between Hutcheson and Fair Chance. This funding is through the SPC. The second one is, and the first one also bundles through SPC. You know, that's, we've been very aggressive with that and will continue to be. I, you know, am watching every opportunity we get at our meetings of SPC, which I'm Vice Chair, and I'll be Chairman in January of SPC. So we're going to seek every opportunity we can to not only do the trail, the Sheepskin, but also any kind of bridges or, or road projects steering funding to Fayette County at every chance we get. You know, there's always a competitive solicitation of that by the counties, but we're on top of these things, and we're going to keep being aggressive on this.
If I could just make a comment, that you see two very similar motions, both for the same amount, that we are applying for two grants for the same project. And so, if we don't get the one, hopefully we get the other, and vice versa. There's also the possibility that these two grant programs could work in conjunction in some way, shape, or form. So, we are not applying for two $3.2 million grants. We're actually only anticipating getting one.
But we're covering all the bases.
Right. Any further comment? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of a SPC Transportation Alternative Set Aside, TASA, grant application for construction of 4.6 miles of the Sheepskin Trail between South Union Township to Fair Chance Borough. Total project cost is $3,206,956.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is brought and move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of the technical and price proposal for the Transportation Improvement Program projects involving the Sheepskin Trail City of Uniontown Project. The engineering construction management system number is L00921. The phase is for preliminary engineering.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is brought and move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of the technical and price proposal for the Transportation Improvement Program projects involving County Bridge Two, County Bridge Three, and County Bridge 155. The engineering construction management system numbers are L00893, L00894, and L00895. The phase is for preliminary engineering.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is brought and move in second. Any further discussion? We'll say that this, this and the previous motion, we are seeking additional companies through the PennDOT's Engineering Cost Management System, Construction Management System, to help bid. Of course, the more bid is you get, the lower the price. So, that's our effort there to get more people involved in the bidding process. Any further comment? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of the Unified Planning Work Program, UPWP, agreement between Fayette County and Southwestern Pennsylvania Corporation. The county's reimbursement is $30,714 for the two-year period.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is brought and move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Number fourteen, Commissioners.
Consider approval of the July 15th, 2025 Commissioners Agenda Meeting Minutes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is brought and move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of the July 17th, 2025 Commissioners Meeting Minutes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is brought and move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of the July 17th, 2025 Commissioners Special Meeting Minutes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is brought and move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of the appointment of Dawn Travis to the Westmoreland Fayette Workforce Development Board in the business sector for a term of September 1st, 2025, and ending August 31st, 2029.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is brought and move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider a motion approving the purchase and sale agreement with Fayette Economic Development Council, a Pennsylvania nonprofit economic development corporation of 1040 Eberly Way, Lamont Furnace, PA, for the transfer to Fayette of three county-owned properties identified as parcels 36-08-0131, 36-05-0043, and 14-33-0051-01. The monetary consideration for this purchase and sale is $1. The purpose of the transfer of the subject properties is to provide Fayette the means and opportunity to cause to be placed utility lines across said properties for economic development. If said properties cease to be used for such purposes, ownership will revert back to the county. As additional consideration for the transfer, Fayette has agreed to reclaim the surface area of the said properties and any adjacent trail properties to the trail standards in the Sheepskin Trail feasibility study of 2018. A copy of the purchase and sale agreement is attached.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is brought and move in second. Any comments? So, we are very pleased to work with Fayette on this pro, project. This will allow for potential utilities, including natural gas, broadband, water, to be either sent down to the southern end of the county or to be brought up from the southern end of the county, and so that we can increase our infrastructure, utility infrastructure. As a, so that's, that's part A, but part B is, they are going to end up, as they reclaim the property, building about five miles of the Sheepskin Trail. And that will be done without a grant, and so that is a very good thing. We are also working with Fayette in North Union Township on a very similar deal that is not, that hasn't been worked out, all the details haven't been worked out, to build about two, two and a half miles of trail from the city line north into North Union Township. And again, that would be a private deal without any grant funding. So as you see us, you know, getting grant funding for certain portions of the jail, of the trail, make sure that you know that we're also trying to work private deals to build the Sheepskin Trail.